We presume we're ruled by everybody here and we have a proclamation for Mother's Day and others for peace. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Do we have a second? Okay, the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Any questions on the minutes of April 8th or the warrants?
I have one comment, just a typo on the minutes. Ordinance is missing the second, or missing an "I" on page three and four. Two places.
Okay. Nancy, did you find that?
Yeah.
If not, all right, great, thank you very much. Any other comments on minutes or warrants? If not, all in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to our public comment piece. And, oh, I'm sorry, well, thank you very much, Stuart. Before we move on to the public comment, we have the great pleasure of being presented with a proclamation for mothers and others for peace. And Jeannie, would you be willing to read this, please?
I would.
Thank you.
Thank you. So proclamation for mothers and others for peace. Whereas throughout the history of our town, state, and nation, mothers have often and willingly exercised a special responsibility as caregivers, activists, and advocates for a better world for their children and for their communities. They have promoted many worthwhile public causes to end slavery, improve working conditions, provide public health services and social welfare assistance to those most in need, and promote peace and reconciliation. And whereas after the Civil War, suffragette and abolitionist Julia Ward Howe wrote a Mother's Day proclamation declaring dedication to peaceful actions of husbands and sons. And in 1908, Ann Jarvis, in honor of her mother's public service, began campaigning for a Mother's Day to be celebrated every year. And whereas in 1914, U.S. President Woodrow Wilson declared Mother's Day a national holiday to be celebrated the second Sunday in May. Now therefore, Fiat proclaimed by the Select Board of the Town of Bennington that May 11th, 2019, the day before Mother's Day, be recognized to celebrate the historical connections between Mother's Day and women's work for strong communities, peace, and the enrichment of our lives through their activism and advocacy. Dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 22nd day of April, 2019.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this? All right, well, it's a great pleasure to have this in front of us and thank you very much. We'll sign this, circulate this for signature. And thank you, mothers and others for peace. So now we'll move on to the public comment period. And again, we're changing these around just a little bit with the microphone situation. The table wasn't working out very well for us, so what we've done is we've put a podium up for presenters and we now have a microphone, designated microphone, for the general public to use for the questions, for comments as they come up. And so as much of a pain as it is to come up to the microphone, we would ask you to do that, please, for the folks at home watching on CAT TV. So citizen comment is a time we reserve to hear residents' thoughts about topics not on the agenda. We welcome your insights, but because topics are unwarned, this is not a time for board discussion or decision-making. Please state your name when you approach the mic and refrain from making personal attacks. And please keep your comments to under three minutes. If you'd like a follow-up call, please leave your phone number on the signup sheet, as many of you have. So the first one on our sheet tonight is Ted, and I can't read your last name, I'm afraid, so Ted, come on up and I'll let you introduce yourself.
Katsumpus.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ted Katsumpus.
I might have made a mess of that, anyway.
I live at 145 Dewey Street. And thank you, Select Board members, for your service to our community and happy Earth Day. It's apropos that today is Earth Day as I present this petition to you and comment on recent happenings in our neighborhood. And I'm going to briefly read the petition. Replacement of the Tree-Bush Privacy Cover Elm and Dewey Streets. That was the title of the petition. And the petition reads, "We, the residents of the Dewey Street, Elm Street, Harrison Avenue neighborhood, call upon the Town of Bennington to replace the trees, bushes, cover that were removed from the Town of Bennington Eastman/former Rutland Railroad Line area without notice or collaboration with all affected taxpayers and residents of said neighborhood." The petition is signed by 17 residents, neighbors, taxpayers of said neighborhood. So a few weeks ago, as many of you may know, the town cleared away significant growth from the Dewey Street, what we also call the ravine, or the Rutland Railroad piece of property that the town owns. I understand it was prompted from concerned neighbors about dead and precariously hanging branches and trees. And I applaud our Public Works Crew for their quick action in taking care of it. What I wish had happened, though, was what makes this even more difficult for us was that before such a drastic change was to occur in our neighborhood, we would have liked to have been warned and consulted. The change to our neighborhood has been dramatic in a negative way. In my encounters with folks in the neighborhood, not a single neighbor or resident has thought this was a thoughtful approach or good outcome. Julie Moore, the Secretary of the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, said in today's Bennington Banner commentary section, and I'll quote, "Trees, shrubs, and other small plants stabilize roadside banks, reduce erosion, and filter storm water flowing from roads and neighboring uplands. They also calm traffic, delineate the edge of the road, and sustain the sense of place that many rural towns wish to preserve." None of this happened in our situation, in our neighborhood. My hope is that the town will take into consideration this petition and the neighbors that this has affected and come to a meaningful solution that is appropriate for the environment, neighborhood, and residents, and that it will be done in collaboration with us and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you be leaving the petition with us?
Yes, I will.
Okay, great, thanks very much. One of us will be getting back to you. Next on the list is Alicia Holden.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Alicia Holden. I live at 145 Dewey Street. And I wanted to bring up something that happened in the past. About 10 years ago, it came to our attention that the sidewalk on our side of the street was going to be removed. A bunch of neighbors got together, came to you, the Select Board, and said, "Please don't remove the sidewalk." You guys looked into it, researched it, and we were able to save the sidewalk on that side of the street. As I'm sure everybody here knows, that's a very busy street and it was going to be detrimental, we thought, to our neighborhood to remove that sidewalk. Unfortunately, with this thing that's happened in the past few weeks, we didn't have any sort of idea that it was going to happen, so we were not able to come ahead of time and say, "Please do not do this." We just heard that a few neighbors wanted some trees that were dangerous taken down. But, so, in light of the fact that we couldn't ameliorate the problem before it happened, I also would like to ask that something be replaced there so that it can bring the character back to our busy, in-town neighborhood and bring a little more Vermont back into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tim Payne.
My name is Tim Payne. I live at 301 Elm Street. And I'm the neighbor who complained about the trees. So let's get that started right off the top. A large dead tree hanging over cars, power lines to the hospital, all that's important, and a tree that had died long a time ago hanging in a crab apple. So you can imagine my concern when I came home one day and those trees still remained, but my neighbor across the ravine, the Murphys, had been clear-cut to the back of their property. My heart attack moment was, "Oh, my God, they cut the wrong side of the ravine." But I will say this, that Greater Heights and the town crew were very nice, very professional, but it was way beyond the request of dead trees being removed. Now I can see down to Ted's backyard, and I'm not sure Ted wants to see my backyard. So again, I would invite, an invitation to the neighbors to get together, and I think there's plenty of folks in there who could provide positive feedback, some constructive feedback about how it could be made, so that people can sit in their backyards and enjoy the quiet and not have to see each other's inner workings of their households. The reason I'm on the list, and I know I have three minutes, so I will move quickly, is that I came last month. My issue is the intersection of Elm and Dewey Street, which continues to be a daily threat to the community. I respectfully disagree with town officials who deem it as not a top priority as far as an intersection. I just, I live there. Two accidents this past winter that have resulted in me being out there in 20-degree weather raking glass and plastic from my lawn. Those of you who know where I live, I live on the highest lawn in the intersection, so you can imagine the speed and the violence, which creates a car parking itself on my lawn. I'm not asking for any kind of payment from the town for sweeping the streets several times of glass and plastic. What I'm asking for is a solution. The intersection is dangerous. From observations of my house, most of that traffic is coming from the hospital at a high rate of speed. They are not stopping. It's texting, it's delivery trucks, it's distraught people, which I respect, but someone is going to get killed. And I'm going to say that publicly, so when it happens, we don't have amnesia and we forget that, okay? It's serious, it needs to be addressed. The speed limit, I was incorrect last time I spoke, is 30. I appreciate that. But for some odd reason, it's 25 degrees at the top of Elm Street as you enter Old Bennington. The traffic has increased on Elm Street as people use it as a sidestep to Main Street. I'm happy to do the research, but I'm looking for the research. And the last time I was here, I requested and did not have a follow-up. Number of accidents in the last five to 10 years, that should be easily found. Bennington PD is called a vast majority of the time. The other thing is, my understanding is that occasionally the state does a street, they'll do the count, the number of cars. I imagine that that data is available, so please call my bluff that Elm Street's traffic is not picking up and that people are using it as an alternative route to the hospital, to the post office, around the Four Corners traffic, whatever, but I would love to have someone to come and measure that. By the way, I have noticed that since last time we came, there are more police officers in the area. Appreciate that. But I notice that because I've pulled over people and giving them tickets. Surprise, surprise. It doesn't take them long to find somebody to get the attention for. So I appreciate the Police Department and the chief making that effort. It has been noticed. But again, the intersection is dangerous. We're coming out of winter, the lines are all stripped from the winter's worth of plowing, and there's no markings, and clearly the stop signs have not been effective in getting drivers to slow down and to come to a complete stop.
Okay. Thank you very much.
301 Elm Street, if you want to know any of that information.
Okay, one of us will be in touch with you, Stuart. We can coordinate after the meeting about that.
That should have been done when you requested it, two meetings ago.
Well, actually, we went out and got estimates to place a four-way stop across the intersection.
The data, the data side of it.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't know why that didn't come forward unless I completely forgot to ask for it. But I did go out and get some estimates to place a four-way signal light in the intersection. It does require that we work with the owners of the poles themselves. Green Mountain Power, I believe, is at least one of the owners, it may be, that consolidated as the other. So we've got some work to do to put together the full price of hanging a signal light four-way stop at that intersection.
And pulling together the traffic data for that area.
Yeah, that should be fairly quick.
Okay. Thank you. Amy Dobson. Where is she? There she is. Good evening, Amy.
I'm Amy Dobson. I live at 356 Elm Street. I was here, I'm here to talk about the ravine, but I can talk all day about that intersection if you guys need backup on that. That is, that is a nightmare on the daily. I would like to express my concern about the outcome of the clearing of the ravine on Dewey Street. It's clear that the ravine needed some attention, and I support and applaud the important work of maintaining town property. However, the complete clearing of the ravine is surprising. While I am not directly affected by this action, I would like to better understand the process that led to this result. First, did the town communicate its plans with the impacted residents in advance of and during the process? Second, was an arborist consulted to explore if any of the trees were healthy enough to keep? Was an ecologist consulted to look at the impact on any existing systems in the ravine? Third, are there plans to plant trees to try to recover the prior aesthetics of this neighborhood? I would like to impress upon the Select Board the importance of soliciting residents' input on issues that concern their property lines and quality of life. This is simply a common sense idea in order to maintain goodwill and foster strong relationships amongst all parties. To that end, I suggest the Select Board review its process for approving future land maintenance actions, and where relevant, communicate openly with impacted residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good thoughts and well delivered. Chris Murphy.
Hello, my name is Chris Murphy. I live at 147 Dewey Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Select Board this evening. I'm also here to speak about the ravine, which up until about five minutes ago, we called the gully, but I think the decision has been made, it's the ravine. So I, apart from, in addition to Mr. Payne, I was another fellow who asked for the removal of some trees. There were three trees growing on what appeared to be town property that were clearly over my house. And after we lost a separate tree during one of the windstorms, I went down and folks in the town were very helpful in helping me make that request to the town. I was very surprised to see, instead of just three trees being taken down, by what were a fast-working and courteous crew, instead of three trees, there was probably a 200-foot by 50-foot swath cut through the neighborhood. And lots has already been said, but I will add that the aesthetics, the quiet, the shade, the privacy, were all amenities that were present on our properties, which are no longer there. So that has been taken. So I, I'm a signatory for the, for this piece of paper that Mr. Katsumpus shared, and I would absolutely support the neighborhood giving feedback to the Select Board about what can be placed and replanted in that area. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Stuart, I'm sure you'd like to respond, but let's not. Why don't we respond at a future meeting, if that's all right? Is that all right?
Frankly, I don't disagree.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate both the spirit they were delivered in and also the thoughtfulness of the comments themselves. So, without further ado, let's move on to the item number four, the Bennington Recreation Center. We're lucky to have Jessica Rumlo with us tonight. And thank you so much in advance for everything that's happening at the center. We're really excited about it. You've had some meetings around town, and some of us have been able to hear your, some of your signs of progress already, but we're very happy to have you giving us this update tonight.
Well, I thank you guys for the opportunity to update everybody on what we've been doing. I just want to say that this has been an amazing partnership, and I have thoroughly enjoyed the past four months of being up here in Bennington. The amount of support that I've received from the town, the Select Board, community agencies and partnerships, and then especially the staff that we have at the Rec Center and at the Senior Center right now have made my four months extremely enjoyable, and none of this would have been possible without all of the support. And I just want to be clear that this is 100% a partnership. And a YMCA cannot come in and do all of this work without the support of the community. So thank you, just to start off, by supporting me and helping us achieve a lot of these goals that we've done. So, we are going to start today with just a brief video, kind of giving you an overview of what the Berkshire Family YMCA is all about. Then I'm going to talk about the restructure of the Recreation Center, in addition to adding the Senior Center under our umbrella, which was new to the management agreement since the last time I was here. The three areas of focus that the YMCA uses whenever we talk about new programming is youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. So when we start talking about new programs that we want to bring to the Rec Center and the Senior Center, we always look at these three areas and determine whether or not it's a good fit for us, based on that. And a lot of times, we can find a way to fit it in to what we're doing in our area of focus. Then I'm going to talk about the pathway forward. This is what I put into an organizational assessment that I provided the Select Board, and just talking about what my next steps would be in the bigger picture. So some additional goals for us as we move forward. And then I am going to just touch on the Transition Committee, which was part of the management agreement. We have a committee of community members that come together and we talk about where we are, and they also advise on this transition process. So just highlighting some of the feedback we received from our first meeting.
At the Berkshire Family YMCA, we believe in possibilities. We believe in the possibility that neighbor helping neighbor will strengthen the foundation of our community. We believe in the possibility that at any age, you can change your life through health and wellness. We believe in the possibility that nurturing the potential of our youth will give way to future leaders. When you are at the Berkshire Family YMCA, you are more. You are part of something bigger. When you are at the Berkshire Family YMCA, you are full of possibilities.
Full of possibilities is our theme for 2019 for the organization. I'm sorry, I talk loud, but I guess I should use a microphone. So full of possibilities is our theme for 2019, and I think that it fits perfect with what we're doing in Bennington. We are full of possibilities. What we can do together as a community is, there's no limit when we all work together, and that's exactly what we're trying to do this year. And I think we're succeeding, and the possibilities are endless. And I hope throughout this presentation, you're going to maybe even think of different ways that we can come together to continue our movement forward. So I came on board at the beginning of January. It's really hard to think of how fast and slow this time might have gone. But we made some quick changes due to the fact that the Senior Center's leadership decided to retire shortly after I stepped into this role. And Stu and Dan came to me and they said, "What do you think? What role could the Y play with this transition?" And for me, it didn't seem like a leap to add the Senior Center under our umbrella. One, I think that there's a real benefit to having the Rec Center and the Senior Center under one umbrella, because we're supporting the health and wellness and the social needs of all ages. At a YMCA, we serve from cradle to cane, is what we say. So when we talk about adding the Senior Center into our scope, it fit perfectly. That's what we do. That age group is actually one of our largest membership bases for the Northern Berkshire and the Pittsfield Branch. So I was excited for that opportunity, and it also gave me an opportunity to restructure some of the staff that we had. The aquatics director at the time came to me, and she had worked previously at the Senior Center, Carrie Fabrizius, and she very much wanted to move over and run the programming at the Senior Center, which gave way to elevating one of the Rec Center's very own, Morgan Flynn, into the aquatics manager position. So we were able to elevate a guard who had spent time at the Rec Center into a leadership role. That wouldn't have been available without that. With this, we also were able to add an additional full-time staff. So now not only do we have a program manager at the Senior Center, but we also have a health and wellness director who is bridging the gap between the Senior Center and the Rec Center. So we have someone going back and forth between both facilities with the goal that we'll be able to start marketing and reaching all ages at both facilities and do cross-programming to get more participation at both facilities. And of course, I don't want to leave out Chris. Chris has been with the Rec Center for, she probably doesn't want me to say how many, 31 years, I believe it is, but she has been doing a great job helping me maintain the Welcome Center, the membership base, and continuing to grow and support the Rec Center and what we have. So I definitely would like to give a shout-out to Chris and her support in helping me transition. And then a fun little note, this is not the first time that the YMCA has had a presence in Bennington. Actually, the original YMCA in Bennington was erected in 1907, so I just had to throw that in there for you guys. So we're just coming back into the area. Youth development is our first area of focus. The first thing that we did, and I had mentioned this at the Select Board meeting I was at before, was a Kids Night Out program. This runs on Friday nights from 6:00 to 8:30 at night. The kids get to come in. We have Taylor, our Health and Wellness Director, and one of our longtime Bennington staff members, Eric Russell, who run the program. The kids go swimming, they get pizza from Ramunto's Brick Oven Pizza, and they do a STEAM project, so science, technology, engineering, math, arts, something like that, once they're done in the pool. I do want to give a shout-out to Ramunto's because they are donating their pizzas every Friday night to us. So it's a great partnership we have with them. Then we have T-Ball, which was a great program that the Rec Center provided. It ended about two years ago, and so we're excited to be able to bring that back to the Rec Center. We will be starting on May 6th for four- to seven-year-olds, two days a week, right there at the Rec Center. Then over the summer, we are looking at running two youth programs, two in July, two in August. One of them will focus on sport fundamentals, so we're going to be bringing multiple different sports programs into that one, so the kids can try different activities. The second one is Destination Discovery, which is a STEM program. And I learned recently that I actually need to explain what STEM is, because I talk like everybody should know. But STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. So a focus on the sciences to bring to camp. And then we also have destination, or outdoor adventure, which is utilizing the amazing hiking trails that we have in this community and getting kids outside, learning about what they can do to enjoy what is in Bennington. The last two are important because we didn't want to focus just on sports, because not every child enjoys sports, so we are looking at trying to reach as many of the kids as we can. Don't worry, basketball is coming. I keep talking to those two about making sure we don't forget about those amazing basketball courts also. Camp Green Mountain is coming back for its third summer. Registrations are going on now. I do want to make sure that I point out that camp is at a reduced rate from what it would be under the YMCA due to the gracious subsidy that the town provides. So they provide $29 subsidy for every child who attends camp. And then in addition to that, parents can apply for YMCA financial scholarship as well. During the camp, they are at the Bennington Rec Center, out in the amazing fields that we do have available outside. On rainy days, we do head in and change the entire dynamic of the Rec Center, and we're all in there. They do focus, lunch is provided. We are offering programs for sixth through eighth grade, so a larger age group, and there are leaders in training. One of the things that I've heard as I talk about camp in this community is we are one of the few camps that provide a program for working parents. We have before care starting at 7:00 a.m. and we go until 5:30 p.m. every night, Monday through Friday. So that has been one of the plus sides of our camp in this community, is from what we've heard. So healthy living. So at the Rec Center, we all know that space is the biggest challenge that we face. So looking at the space, how do we get creative? One of the first things I did was I had a nice conversation with Andrea from Rise Vermont, and we applied for an Amplify grant to help create a functional strength training room in one of the rooms downstairs. I call it the Purple Room, because the Buildings and Grounds Crew did an amazing job sprucing up the facility for us. And so one of the walls in there is purple. So it's the Purple Room downstairs, but this space will provide the members the opportunity to stretch, do body weight training. We'll have light weights, resistance bands, so they're able to get a full, well-rounded workout. Unfortunately, upstairs, there's just not a lot of space for body weight training and stretching. So by adding this room downstairs gives them the opportunity to do that. We know cardio machines are, we are in dire need of that. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of space to add more cardio machines. There have been times where we have had people sitting on the benches waiting for a treadmill to open up. We have three treadmills and two ellipticals at this time, and we're just not able to meet the needs. So that is definitely something that we are looking into in how to open up space a little bit. Fitness on Demand is a great way to add group fitness training classes to a small facility that doesn't have a large group fitness space. It's a virtual, online, it's basically a virtual group fitness training. So at any point in time, you can come in and say, "I want to take a yoga..." So at any point in time, you can come in and say, "I want to take a yoga class," hit a button, and on the screen pops a yoga instructor who's going to walk you through a workout. We have the ability to schedule it out, so I could have a yoga class at 6:00 a.m., and I could have classes throughout the entire day scheduled out. But this is a way to utilize a small space in the rec center, provide a large variety, but not having the increased personnel cost that go along with that, and having the personnel teaching a class with maybe four to five people based on space. So this would be a really good way to kind of, to bring something into the rec center with the space provided. Silver Sneakers is officially available at the rec center. So Silver Sneakers is a benefit that, for 55 and older, that they can get as part of their insurance. If Silver Sneakers is part of their insurance, they get a Silver Sneakers card. They'll be able to scan in on a tablet, and the town and the Y will be reimbursed based on their membership, and we would receive the membership fees as a check once a month. So it's a way for no cost for the seniors, but their insurance company is covering it. So it's just an added benefit. Taylor is also getting group fitness certified, and we will be able to add Silver Sneakers classes onto our schedule of classes offered at the senior center as well. With the group fitness certification, Taylor is also going to be running fitness classes outside at the rec center, and then also hopefully at the track at the high school as well over the summer. She's going to be doing a 30-minute group fitness class at noon time to try to reach some of the workers, to get them to the rec center. We have a more member-based swim schedule, and what that means is we are trying to make the schedule more friendly for our lap swimmers, who had a hard time before. The schedule was very focused on what program was going on in the pool, so if a school group was in the pool, it was closed to our members. Now by adding a lap or two during those timeframes, our members always have access to the pool to swim laps. So more usage for them. Taylor and Morgan are both trying to get Thai Chi certified. We are adding an adult kickball league to the schedule this summer, trying to get the adults active in the community as well. And Live Strong at the YMCA is the cancer survivorship program that I've mentioned at previous select board meetings. That's a 12-week program for anyone who has been diagnosed and is post-treatment for cancer survivors. As Taylor goes through and gets her certifications for group fitness certification, I will also be able to send her on to get certified in Live Strong at the YMCA. So an additional program that we'll be able to offer soon. Senior Center. We are looking at starting a speaker series. And the one thing I want to point out, and I talked about this in the operational assessment, is the senior center falls under health and wellness, but it also falls under social responsibility. The senior center's schedule is so vast and has so many opportunities, and it's because of community partners who come in to do these programs. So if it wasn't for the community supporting the senior center, we wouldn't have the vast schedule that we have, and so I really do want to give a shout-out to them as well. Because that is, the senior center is the place where they can come to reach a large group of people, and it's pretty amazing the commitment we get from these other community agencies. So Healthier Living with Chronic Disease Workshop, provided by SASH. Healthier Relationship with Food. We have Friday Yoga. All of the leadership at the senior center will be getting Bone Builder certified, so that we have volunteers who run that program right now. But getting our staff certified as well means that we'd never have to cancel the program, and they're able to maintain it even when our volunteers aren't available. Carrie has found out that we can add additional trips through Green Mountain Express on our schedule for the senior center, so that's always an added bonus. And then SASH is supporting the staff in getting certified to teach a program called Eat Smart, Spend Smart. So it walks you through an entire budget on how to grocery shop and how to eat smart. So I feel like that's for any age group that could benefit from that. One of the things that I've noticed as I give this presentation is that the senior center serves 50 and older, and not many people realize that they fall under that age group at the senior center. And so this isn't just for the seniors. So it's for all of our active older adults who want to come in and learn how to eat well and to spend smart. So Social Responsibility. Those of you who have seen my presentation before, have seen this slide has changed a little bit. We are out in the community, we're partnering with people, we are going to others' events, and they're also coming to ours. We had an amazing Healthy Kids Day two Sundays ago now, where we combined the annual Egg Hunt for the Bennington Rec Center with the YMCA's Healthy Kids Day. Healthy Kids Day takes place at all 1,500 YMCA's in the month of April. So when I heard about the successful Egg Hunt that the rec center put on every year, I immediately said, "This is a great opportunity to bring a YMCA program into something that they're doing." We had a great turnout from community partners who made it the special event that it was, because it wasn't just about the candy and the eggs. And the Easter Bunny, who was absolutely amazing for coming to join us. But they also got to meet and to find out what else and what other opportunities are out there in our community. So Rise Vermont had an amazing obstacle course set up. The Bennington Police Department was doing helmet checks, bike helmets, and had the canine dog out seedlings. They were planting seeds with the kids, could take that home. SBMC had jump ropes for the kids, so they were all taking home things. And when all of the kids showed up, they all got a bag, a cinch bag as their prize, YMCA bag. So it was a great event, and we all walked away saying, "This is possible. We can do this." And every single one of the staff members was so motivated and inspired by this event and how well we were able to pull it off, and the support from the community. They just didn't even realize that was possible, and it was great. So Pathway Forward. So the top three priorities for me at this point in time is, for the YMCA, we have to figure out what our large revenue stream could be. So there are a couple ideas. One is, in the management agreement, school age before and after school was one of the focuses that was recognized that was needed. The rec center just doesn't have the space available to run a full before-school and after-school program or reach a large enough size. However, I do think that there's potential at the senior center for space. It is handicap accessible, which the rec center does not have in the two rooms downstairs. There are bathrooms located, and they have the large room with the wood floors and the kitchen, that we would be able to do a before and after-school program in that space and probably license it for 39 kids at a 1 to 13 ratio, which is more than I would be able to do at the senior center, or at the rec center. So that is one of the ideas I propose to the select board. Also, Family Visitation is also another program that we do at the Northern Berkshire Branch and at the Pittsfield Branch, Family Reunification. So families who have been separated through the court system, and we would provide supervised visits for them. So that is another opportunity. I would be able to do that at the rec center in the space in the basement. So those are two opportunities that I would like to explore further over the next couple of months. I do recommend renaming the senior center, due to the fact that I have found that calling it a senior center really puts up a barrier for a lot of people to see it as a resource for adults in the community. Because a lot of 50-year-olds don't recognize or view themselves as a senior, and so they don't look for it as a resource for programming and support. It can be an activity center. It can be an opportunity for us to be able to provide youth programming, senior programming during the day when the kids are at school and the adults are working, or the working adults are busy, and then we can continue programming going throughout the evening. So we start utilizing the space, because there's some very valuable space at the senior center, and we would be able to expand our offerings if we considered that. And then to strategize about the best way to expand the fitness center to increase the amount of cardio equipment we have. One of the first things I said was, "I don't need an office. Can we just knock down my wall? Because I could put six cardio machines right in my office and open up that space." As the Phase 1 plans for UCS continue to expand, the layout of the rec center is changing as well with that, and the welcome center is getting relocated to the front of the building. So now where the welcome center is, I don't need that space. Can we open that space up? Is that an opportunity to expand the fitness center's footprint at the rec center right now and give us the opportunity to start making changes immediately instead of waiting for Phase 2? So those are the three things that are top of my priority. In the operational assessment, I did go into additional priorities as well. But those are the three that I pose at this point to the select board. The Transition Committee held on March 27th. So we all took the time, I gave the same presentation without these last two slides, and we took the opportunity to listen to everybody's opinion about this transition so far. And what we heard continuously and very loud and clear was that communication is a must, and we need to be transparent and upfront with the transition and where we're going from here. And so some of the things that we have done is the Town of Bennington and the YMCA have created just a handout to handout to people, explaining what this process looks like at this point in time. And I can read that now if you want. It says, "The Town of Bennington is committed to keeping the rates at the recreation center affordable, and will continue to invest in the recreation center as a vital resource for our community. The Berkshire Family YMCA is responsible for management of the recreation center programs, but the Town of Bennington retains ownership of the buildings and grounds. Berkshire Family YMCA is providing senior leadership to the Town of Bennington's Recreation Center and the senior center in the following ways. Best practices in the aquatics department that increase aquatics programs and efficiencies. More health and wellness programming and offering at both the recreation center and the senior center. An increase in youth programming at the recreation center, such as Kids Night Out, Healthy Kids Day, and a variety of summer camps. Participation in key community events and community outreach to local organizations with the YMCA's shared mission of youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. An annual fundraising campaign to support new programming." So that's where we are with our partnership. That's what's happening. And we thought that if we had the paper to hand out when people have any questions, it's one unified answer, coming from both the YMCA and the town. We also celebrated the senior center newsletter and talked about how amazing that resource is, but how great it would be to be able to add the rec center programming in addition to it. We did talk that we can't really make it more than 23 pages, so how we might be able to condense that a little bit, but to add more and really start bridging that gap between the senior center and the rec center and start combining it. We also talked about the fact that right now it's getting mailed out to about 275 residents, but if we were able to make that digital, share it on the town website, share it on Facebook, email a link out electronically, we would be able to expand that outreach by so much more. And so those are the things that we are focusing on right now, based on the recommendations of the Transition Committee. So here's my information. If you ever have any questions and things like that, you're always welcome to reach out to me. And now the fun.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's wonderful. It's hard to come back. Very briefly summarizing, you know, it sounds like you want to expand the programs for all ages, which we're really excited about. You're looking at implementing best practices, so it'll be even safer and cleaner than it has been, which we're also very grateful for. Very happy about more kids outside and not all sports. I think that's a great lens that you're working on there. Programs for working parents is super important in this community, and glad that that's a focus for you. Creating multiple powerful partnerships is fantastic, and that's something that really sets us up nicely for a future expansion of the rec center. So very pleased with that report.
Thank you.
I guess I'd ask the board if there are any questions or comments that you'd like to make. Anybody in particular?
I have a quick question. What's the mechanism by which I could get some of the feedback you're hearing, whether it's positive or negative, from people who are using the facility?
So one of the things Taylor did was she posted in the health and wellness department just a sheet saying, you know, what our needs, wants, various. So she did create a spreadsheet for that for me, so I can share that with you guys on different equipment that they're looking for in the fitness center. And then I can also start a shared Google Drive doc as I'm meeting people or we get comments. There's also a comment box at the rec center that people could put comments in as well.
And also, I mean, there are minutes from the first meeting, so there were quite a few comments at that.
Mm-hmm.
Are those minutes public yet?
We can put them up on the website.
Okay. Are there any more, Bill?
No, I'm more just curious about hearing things after you've had a chance to hear them and address them and seeing where we're going.
Okay, so not necessarily directly from the Transition Committee, but just in general interactions as well?
Yeah, and after we've been at it for six months or more, kind of seeing how you're accommodating people's concerns or their ideas or how they feel about what you're doing. I see a lot of great ideas, but I just don't know if I'm going to be able to understand how well they're doing, and I'd like to know.
Okay. We can do that.
And we are going to have regular check-ins with you along the way, as planned, as we are tonight.
Yes.
So thank you very much for that, and that might be a great opportunity for you to...
So I can make sure that comes with my next update then?
Make sure that gets addressed in the next update, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Other comments or questions, Jean?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about the article that was in the banner today, and I'm really glad you used the word partnership. I thought it was really unfortunate that the journalist chose the word takeover. This is not a takeover, and I just, I bristled when I saw that, and I really hope that words matter and they need, the writing and characterization of not only this issue but any issue needs to be accurate. We don't need spin one way or the other, we just need accurate words, and this was not accurate. So I'm really glad you used the word partnership, because that's what it is.
It is a partnership, and a YMCA cannot do what it does without the support of the community that they're in.
Right.
And so wherever we are, in whatever situation, it is always a partnership.
Right. Got that off my chest. I'm curious, we got this wonderful presentation and this wonderful document. How are you communicating all these amazing things that are going on, let's say, to the medical community and to the school system, so people are finding out about them?
So I am begging and pleading to do this presentation anywhere I can. I have done a presentation for Bennington Rotary on Friday night. I also have a, Christie Cross asked me to present for Blueprint, so I will be presenting at Blueprint later on in May. So I've offered even the Bennington Young Professionals we met with, and I offered to come to their board to talk, and they had a lot of interest in the adult sports programs and things like that. So any opportunities that I can get to bring this PowerPoint to people, that's what I'm doing. And it's getting modified and tweaked every time that we have some new things going on. So hopefully it's not the same story.
And would the banner maybe run the schedules, you know, put the...
I can reach out to them and tell them where I'm going to be.
Yeah, maybe they would do that for us. And the other thing, could you just speak to what points of view are represented on the Transition Committee, so people have a sense of who, not names specifically, but just different segments of the community?
So one of the longtime volunteers from the senior center is on the committee. We have the president of Marauder's Swim Team. You want to help me too here?
Sure, there's like another three who are just longtime. The Transition Committee members, they were, they were all suggested by Chris, the assistant director at the rec center, as well as other members of the community. So I think there are three different, just longtime rec center users who are representing the community at large, the swim teams, the master swim team...
We had someone from the school system there.
The school system, Rise Vermont, our rec center staff, town staff...
Catamount connections.
Right. And UCS has also, they're not part of the committee per se, but are attending those meetings as well to talk about their partnership and expansion. I think that covers it.
Thank you. Sounds like it's a thoughtfully put-together group of people.
Did you, did you folks mention the longtime senior center member?
I did. We have the longtime senior center volunteer. We have the longtime senior center volunteer.
Thank you.
I had two quick things. The first one, I represent, you know, a very small part of the community, but I can just say since YMCA has come on board, there's a noticeable difference as a user of the rec center from the weight room to the pool area, to the way you guys manage your lifeguards, to the presence, just kind of the way you lay out the pool, to the cleanliness of the facility, I mean, the list goes on and on. So if people are trying to understand the impact you're having day to day in the rec center, go use it. I mean, it's, there's a noticeable difference. You can't not go there if you were there in years past. I mean, you guys are making changes, so that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then as far as getting some of this information out here, we have the good fortune of having some folks in the audience tonight that have a very strong, positive social media presence in our community and he might want to, you know, gain access to some of this material and put it out there for you. So just...
Dr. Grayson.
Yeah.
Other comments, other questions?
Thanks for being here, Chris.
Jeanne?
Yeah, so I got to go to the Healthy Kids Day.
Yes.
And in an hour and a half, we'd given out 100 cups of soil and seeds, like there were so many kids. It was so well organized. It was wonderful, really, really great. This weekend, I ran into someone who did not consider himself a senior, who had somehow found the senior newsletter and he came over to me to say there were a bunch of things in there that he found interesting and he would be going to those. And he was like, "I didn't know this was for me." So I think you're exactly...
We need to find a way to get it out to the masses.
Yeah.
We really do in making that information electronic.
Yeah. And then the two things that I have a question about, so the idea of expanding the supervised visits, I believe PAVE now does that.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if you've had any conversations with them?
I went to the opioid response team meeting and met someone from DCF who gave me a contact. So I still need to walk through that process, but it is definitely on my radar for the very near future.
Okay. And then last thing, so if you were, if the rec center were to start tearing down walls and sort of, you know, reimagining itself in the near future, what would that look like? I mean, how would, how would that happen?
That's a really good question, probably for Jeff Goldstein, the architect. So what we did at this point in time was we just reached out to the architect that is on, who is doing the work for UCS and just said, "Is this possible? What could this look like?" And we are in the very early stages of the conversation. It's been on my radar for, I don't know, I probably brought it up the first two weeks I was up there. It was like, "What can we do? I'll give it my office. Just make more space for me." But looking at it and saying, "What does this actually look like? How much money does this cost? Which walls are actually supporting walls and which ones can we knock down?" All of those things still have to be looked at. So it's just one of those ideas that we're saying, "We're going to be entering into a large construction project in the near future at that location." And is it possible to think a little bit bigger about what we can do at the rec center now to provide more space and more resources for our members?
Thank you. It's just fantastic.
Just a couple of things. Thank you. You've answered a lot of my questions coming into this and I'd like to see that, as Donald mentioned, not just the sports-related camps, but as a math teacher, seeing the STEAM and STEM pieces added to that. I did notice the fees attached to some of these and I saw with the Green Mountain Camp, you have some tuition assistance. Is it possible or is there some kind of mechanism where people could make a donation to say sponsor a camper or sponsor someone?
Yes, we definitely could. So we get donations all of the time at our other facilities, so if someone wanted to sponsor a child for a program, it would just be earmarked specifically for Bennington programming and we would make sure. And it would probably be a conversation with the staff or even if you had a child specifically you wanted to donate it to, we would be able to do that as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
So gift certificates or gift cards can be purchased as well and we could do it that way too.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any citizens that have comments for the board on this subject? Please come to like.
Do you have an explanation about what they're going to do with the senior center? Bringing kids in or whatever?
So this was just a, an idea that we had. So before, school starts at 6:30 a.m. for the parents who have to get to work and it would go until they transitioned to school, whether it would be a bus or walking, depending on what school they go to. They would be out of the facility by 8:30. From what I understand, programming usually starts around 9:00, 9:30 for the senior center and it's only going to be in the large space. So the, the sitting room in the back and the art studio would still be available for seniors, so they would be able to enter the facility right away at 8:00 a.m. like they normally do. And then the kids would transition back to the facility for 3:00 p.m., which tends to be when senior programming is ending as well. So they would just be in the large space and then we would have still the rest of the senior center available for seniors.
And they have other things after that run into at least 5:00. So that's...
Well, some of those are rental spaces and things like that that we would have to look at. So this is just an idea at this point in time. There might be some small modifications and changes, but they would be small changes that we would probably be able to find ways to work around and make sure that there's no impact on the schedules that we are providing. But it would be providing a huge resource and addressing a huge need in our community.
And we will look actively into it because it's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I think this board is very appreciative of you looking for new streams of revenue so we can expand programs for seniors and for everybody else.
Thanks.
So, but we're not committing to anything at this point, so we're glad to hear your ideas and bring them to us as they, as they flesh out.
I can tell you exactly how the seniors feel because I've talked to them. They feel like they're getting shoved out and when they hear this, they're going to feel the same. I don't think, I, it's not there for kids. They've got everything there is to have for kids to do. What more do they need to do? Do older people not matter? I don't think there should even be there.
Rose, you can only speak for yourself at this point?
I am speaking for myself.
Yes, so not for other seniors.
Don't you?
So not for other seniors, but they are very welcome to share their thoughts. All right?
Well, yeah, but they won't.
Well, next question.
Because I've got the bigger mouth and I can do it and I know what they tell me and they're not happy and things are not going as great as everybody needs you to believe.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Rose.
I'm there all the time. I don't like to be shut up when I get talking because I have a right to say what I think, whether you like it or you don't. The seniors are not being treated right. What do they have for seniors? The whole paper is for kids and very on the end, like a little thought after thought, it's for people. I don't see...
Rose, there's a 27-page calendar of events that just covers the senior center and actually what we've asked is to increase, is to add what happens for, what happens outside the senior center to it and it's difficult to do because there are so many things in that newsletter and that began with Sue. So that is not, that is not new. But this is not a place to debate this. This is, all we're doing is sharing ideas.
Then who do you think you are? I've seen some of the things you've done and they're not very nice. Actually, one was to me two weeks ago, when you come over and start telling me what I should say and think, "I don't know who you are, but here's one person you're not going to do it to." Because you don't promote, don't.
Okay, Rose, Rose, no, you do not have the right to stand up here and be insulting and be derogatory.
Yes, I do.
No, you don't. You're out of order and I'm going to ask you to sit down in a minute.
She doesn't have to come in and get into a conversation that she had no right to begin and she starts telling me how I should be patient and I should do all that. Who do you have to think she is? And I would like, I could say more, but I'm not.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's not right. And I'm just telling you what all the seniors have told me because I'm there live. They said, "We feel like we're being pushed out." And I believe it. I mean, I wasn't even going to come because it's, obviously, it gets me too upset.
Okay.
Because I believe in it. And when they start pushing seniors out and everything's kids, I'm sorry, I love kids, but there's a limit.
Okay, we're, thank you. We are committed to not pushing seniors out. We're committed to expanding program for seniors and this is a work in progress.
Work in progress. It was, it's an idea presented to open up conversation.
Okay. And more will come on this before we take any...
Exactly.
And please keep thinking outside the box on the senior center and the rec center. We need it.
Thank you.
Other comments for the select board on this? Please.
I am Andrea Malinowski with Rise Vermont and I just would like to say how much of a pleasure it's been to work with Jess in partnership to offer programs for the community, whether it's community-based at the rec center, the senior center, which apparently I can be a part of, being 50 years of age. But I'm excited to work across all sectors to help increase programming for everybody for health activities in the community.
Thank you.
Good job.
Always a pleasure. You too.
Nancy. Come on up.
Hi, Nancy White. I just want to repeat what I'd said at the last meeting. We're hearing about the partnership, but nobody's talking about the partners who are paying that $650,000. That's the local taxpayers. We've been shut out of this entire process. We're the ones who paid for that rec center for 45 years. I don't know how long for the senior center. A lot of the groups that you're partnering with are nonprofits that we also help support. I was concerned when I read that the two YMCA's when they merged, it sounds like their mission is to educate local children and provide services for their families. I don't know how we can talk about the YMCA and not talk about UCS up there because many of those programs are going to go together, aren't they not?
UCS is running its own program and they, they are going to be connected to us, but we're two separate organizations at that point in time.
But according to this at the Berkshire Y, all the kids in the early childhood program and the after-school programs get a free membership to the Y. Does that mean they'll all get free memberships to the rec center?
That would be a discussion that we would have if we decided to, but it would be, once again, it would be the town and the YMCA discussing that. It is a Berkshire Family YMCA policy that we provide memberships to our participants because school-age participants pay a large amount of money per year in our, in our facility. So it's a benefit for them to be part of this program and in our childcare. It doesn't necessarily mean that's exactly what we're going to do here, but it's definitely an added benefit and what we find is that those families do participate in a wide variety of our programs. So it's a way to get them connected to the YMCA outside of just the school-age program and we've found benefits with that, but that would once again be a discussion as we move forward.
But as I hear about these plans, you don't have the funding for the childcare programs at the rec center. You don't have the funding for the after-school programs. And so I have to wonder, as a taxpayer, will the select board add more money into the budget that we'll have to pay? I'm stunned that UCS was able to design a building to add on to the rec center. We weren't included at all. I mean, how did that come about?
Do you know the funding source for where UCS is getting the money, Nancy?
I'm sorry?
The funding source for UCS's growth on our building?
The federal taxpayers.
So have you delved into that? Have you talked to UCS? I mean, have you gone through the exercise?
I've been trying to get information about this and I tell you, it's hard to get information. I asked about the meetings last time. Did they advertise the transition meeting? No, they didn't.
Are you switching gears? I mean, you're pointing backwards. We're talking UCS or we're talking...
I see where UCS and, and the rec center are going to be dovetailed together.
And you're thinking you're, what's opposed? Is that your opinion? I mean, I guess, what's the question?
I'm basing it on what the Berkshire Family YMCA says their mission is. It is to educate local children and provide services for their families. I see a lot less with the YMCA coming to Bennington to do with recreation than I see them teaming up with local nonprofits for services.
One of the things, I think that you, on our website, that's from our childcare page and that's what the mission of our childcare is, but the mission of the Berkshire Family YMCA is to put caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility into programs that build a healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. So that's, that's what our mission is. What you're looking at is our childcare mission and what we're doing specifically in that program. And childcare is not a program that we're looking at as of right now. Our school-age program is something that we're exploring and opportunity to bring to, but that's not actually the Berkshire Family YMCA's organizational mission.
So the after-school programs and the snow day programs that have been talked about, you won't be doing those up there?
We are looking at ways to be able to do that, but we have challenges in the current footprint of the recreation center.
Okay. And what would the cost be next year if the town signed on with the YMCA?
All of this is being worked out, but we've made a general commitment, generalized commitment that for the current services that people get right now, that we're going to do everything we can to keep the cost where they are. As services expand, there might be, for people who want expanded services, there might be some ability to charge something different, but for the core services, I think, have I got this right? For the core services, the swimming and the weight room, you know, we are committing to trying to keep that price what it is today or adjusted for inflation.
Okay. When I looked at phase one and then I looked at phase two, and is phase two really for real or was that a joke?
I really hope it is because it'd be a great value add to our community. You know, we might encourage people to come into this town of Bennington.
I don't think that many people in Bennington would be able to afford the services that would be offered up there. That's why I'm concerned.
And that's your opinion? Well, let's not say no before we have a chance to look at it. But listen, Nancy, really, we're, we're spraying here.
Okay, last, last question.
She's answered your question about the child...
Okay, I just have one last question. Is the funding UCS receiving for that building based on the YMCA being at the rec center?
No.
No?
No.
It's totally separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so I am glad to have you come. Stuart, I wonder if you would be willing to give us just a very brief summary of where you think we are in this stage and what will be coming next, when we can expect the next of the report. It's a year-long process, so...
Yes, it is a year-long process. The transition team meets quarterly. They've had their first meeting. They'll meet again at the end of June, probably, sometime in that range. We are due for a, a full assessment in September of the coming year and at that point, there will be recommendations that come forward that the board will be, will have to act on as to whether or not, and if so, how do we go forward into the following year? And whether that's another enhanced transition plan or a full-blown partnership, that we can't predict. I think it really depends on how the Berkshire Y board feels about the relationship and how you all feel about the relationship that'll determine those steps. But as I, as I said at the transition committee meeting, it strikes me that even though this is the 120-day assessment, it seems to me that we're moving at light speed. There are, there are things happening here that, that one could only think would like to happen and they're actually in play. And, and this whole idea of the, of the true umbrella of both the senior and recreation programs coming together, in my opinion, seems to be working and working very well. And I think it's something that we all should welcome. I understand that there may be individuals that feel that they're not part of the process or they feel displaced, but that's, that's going to be a temporary situation because as these programs come into play and come into place, they're going to be much more inclusive and much more, I think, much more extraordinary than we've been able to offer in the past.
And we would like to thank you for your enthusiasm and your intelligence and your obvious commitment to working hard on this. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting and we'll, we'll talk to you again soon.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda, we're going to pass this proclamation back, is the, the concept of an energy committee. And I'm going to just start this off by reading from our town plan as I sometimes do. You've all seen this. You all know that we have it. We have a relatively new energy chapter in this plan and the very first recommendation in that energy chapter says, "The town should reestablish, maintain, and support its municipal energy committee. That committee should pursue implementation of this plan, advocate for energy conservation, and renewable energy projects, and report on a regular basis to the select board." At our February 25th meeting, we had not a vote, but a fairly, I would say, general consensus that it would be a good idea to have an energy committee. I think we, there have been conversations about what does that look like? We were offered a proposal. I actually think that this first item in the town energy plan is a pretty good place to start. There are 47 strategies recommended in this plan and there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be winnowed through. So I would love to ask this board to kind of start our consideration with this first item on the energy plan. And I think the only other piece is that I have a pretty strong feeling that we more or less agree that we need to do it, but I think we do need to be clear about the process, about the scope that this committee would have, about what amount of reporting we would expect from them, and more or less the timeline that we would expect them to work on. So I have some ideas about that, but before I contaminate the waters here, what are people's thoughts on this?
In terms of topics or in terms of yes, to go forward?
Well, do we still feel that it's a good idea to go forward in the energy committee? Is that the sort of general consensus? Is not a vote we're taking here, but is that the...
Your name's Anna.
Yeah, I do.
General?
I have a couple of thoughts. Did anybody else go to the V-CAN meeting about six or eight weeks ago?
Nope.
They had some interesting stuff that they talked about there, maybe it was two months ago. So North Bennington and Shaftesbury, I started a North Shaft Energy Committee and I can't remember how they, I'm on the committee, I missed the last meeting. One of the interesting things that was brought up at the meeting, Jim Hand and the Dorset group were there, along with, there was another woman from up north that talked. They were both really successful, but in very different ways. One decided to actually fall under the town umbrella and the other decided to act independently. And they accomplished very different things successfully and I think that's one big question to ask is whether it becomes a municipal wing or whether or not it's an independent board that brings ideas then to the select board to enact. And I think that Dorset was independent, but they, I mean, I think right now they're saving the town like $85,000 a year just in electricity in the change, in the recommendations that they've brought forth. So for me, I guess anything I would want to do would be the simplest possible thing until we had time to discuss, where a committee, a group of people had time to discuss whether or not this becomes an umbrella of the municipality or an independent organization that then will bring ideas.
Well, we could start there and that's a good place to start. You know, at the February 25th meeting, which I apologize you weren't at, but of course you hadn't been elected yet.
You watched it on TV.
But at that meeting, we did, we can try to talk them out of it, but we did say that if this becomes a committee of the board, for one thing, they report to us, you know, they sort of do what we ask them to do. For another thing, they have to post their meetings, they have to take minutes and deliver them within five working days of having done them. There's very much structure that has to be in place in order for them to follow the open meeting law. And if they're not going to follow the open meeting law, then they, it would not work to have that be a committee of the select board. So it's quite a lot of work to actually be a committee of the select board and I think that's a really good point that you bring up. However, we did hear, may hear again later on tonight from the group that they are undaunted and would nevertheless, you know, like us to consider to push forward because it would give them, if I'm recapitulating their case well, it would give them the ability to have a kind of direct line to the select board for recommendations and for designing their work. So it would be a little bit more of a connection.
Yeah, and I do think that's important because I do think if they are, if we have a town energy committee, then there needs to be a charge, there has to be a report, and then you move on to the next topic as opposed to it being more free-ranging and finding things that are of interest that we just want to pursue.
Yeah.
To hear Jim Hand tell that their little independent committee is the most popular committee in town because they never ask for money. It sounds like the one who explains money.
And it could be very fleet and they could go in any direction that follows their interest. They don't necessarily have to stick to what, so when the select board creates a committee, you know, we create it for a reason because we want to know something, we want an answer to something and we expect, you know, that committee to kind of be working on that. So that's a fair question, but I do think that this, that our town would really benefit from having a group, think about this town plan, which has, as I say, 47 recommendations in it for different things that we could be doing, and helping us prioritize these recommendations and helping us figure out how we might get through this. And one way we could do this would be to set up a committee for a year and give them the opportunity to kind of figure out what the committee is and essentially develop a plan of work and then come back to us in a year and we could then think about whether or not that committee becomes a longstanding committee or whether that, whether they have helped us prioritize the work as we have wanted it here.
Can the select board, oh, go ahead.
Would this be a situation where, when we were forming the charter review committee, that people came in and we interviewed them?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we set up a committee, we have to do the whole nine yards.
Okay.
We have to let it be open to anybody, we have to do interview process, we have to do a selection of the committee, we have to give them guidelines, we have to give them terms, we have to do minutes, we have to do meeting notice, we have to do all that stuff.
Not that these people that are listed here aren't great.
Especially the last one.
I mean, this really does raise the question of what do you get by having a town energy committee versus the climate advocates of Bennington? You know, so you have an ear, but you also may have less flexibility, you know, I don't know. I mean, I think there's...
Would one or the other have a different level of access to town employees for information or guidance?
You're smiling.
I think one of the things we have to be careful of, one of the things we have to be very careful of is not to create more work for our town employees.
Right.
So we know that's the guiding principle of whatever we do. The other thing is we're not committed to any funding at this point.
Exactly.
Those are our two kind of guiding principles.
Exactly.
It does feel to me like, at very least, Stuart, there would have to be a posting of notice part, right? So if they were getting minutes to you and...
If it is in fact a committee of the town, then yes, they must follow the open meeting law. If, in fact, as Bill has indicated, and I don't know what Dorset is doing, but if in fact they're an independent group operating on their own, coming forward with recommendations, then I'm not, I don't believe they are subject to the open meeting law because they are not essentially endorsed by the town and they're not charged by the town in any activity. The short side of that is that the town doesn't have to listen to anything they suggest, but if in fact their suggestions are valid and realistic, I don't know why a select board wouldn't listen to them. My concern, as I've told you, Donald, is that creating another committee that becomes a committee of the town begins, I think, to create demands on staff. I don't have any problem with as a staff person being called to essentially testify before the group or to offer opportunities and information to the group. That's not the issue, but it's creating staff to take minutes or keep minutes or post meetings or do agendas or provide them with additional information and access that any committee, I mean, the charter review committee was a great working committee. We met weekly and there was a staff person taking minutes, at least two of us were there beyond that, so there were at least three staff people at every one of those meetings throughout that six-month period that they worked. And that was a lot of effort. It was, the outcome was very nice, the outcome, I think, was very good, but as we create committees, we create work for staff people and I just, I am concerned that we don't have a lot of staff time to be pushing people into, whether it's an evening meeting or a noontime meeting or a meeting outside of their workspace where they've got to perform for someone else. And so that's my concern. I mean, I like the idea that Dorset's got an independent committee acting on their own.
But the charter committee was, was an unusual situation that we did have a quick deadline, right?
Yes.
So we're not talking about having a staff person take notes or...
Also, yeah, I think also that we probably wouldn't want a volunteer committee necessarily or a ad hoc committee going through our town plan and making recommendations to us that was not...
I don't disagree.
That was not really a part of us. So it feels to me like this energy plan is rich with possibilities and there are a lot of great ideas in here. We have not gotten started on very many of them. It would be great to have some help prioritizing this and looking for actionable items. So that feels to me like, at very least, a good place to start.
Can I ask a question? Probably a stew question, but what if you actually had an energy committee that worked on the mission statement and tried to be the driving force behind the town plan and making that happen in a more official capacity, but then had an independent committee that was an advisory committee that could kind of be on the ground, coming up with ideas, meeting more frequently and bringing ideas to the town committee? Is that something you can do?
I think it really depends on what the demands of the board-appointed committee are and that's my only concern. I mean, if the committee is established as a town energy committee, and we did have one in the past.
We did.
They had a key to the office, they had a select board member as a liaison, they met weekly or monthly, I'm not even sure.
Monthly.
But they came and went. We didn't take minutes, they did. We posted their agendas, we did that kind of administrative work for them, but beyond that, the staff didn't have to do anything. We were not required to send somebody out in an evening to another meeting for which they had to take minutes or be there unless they were invited to come and speak about, well, for instance, the town plan, Dan might be the one to come and talk about it. So I think you could do that, Bill. I think the charge, the charge for the town-appointed committee is what really matters and what is expected of them and of the staff in order to serve them.
Okay.
But Bill, were you asking about violations of, like, could a group meet and not, there'd be official meeting, but then there'd be sort of unofficial meetings that would then inform the official meeting? Is that what you...
Right, there might be a different group that's kind of, you know, has a seat or two on the town group. They can do more, they can do a lot more of the legwork, meeting more regularly.
If we do set up a committee, it'd be good to set up a relatively small committee so that it's not difficult to come up with a quorum and then anybody who wants can go to those meetings. They can, you know, that, and it'd be wonderful, for example, if you would be a liaison to that committee, if you have an interest in that, it would be, I think, great for us to have somebody that was dialed into that. But it doesn't feel to me, I think we could ask this, if we did create this committee, I think we could ask them to be self-sufficient. Dan, is it possible to put you on the spot about BCRC and the Maricor Vista? Do we, is there anything you can say about that?
All I know is that they do have, they do have a staff person at BCRC who is working with energy committees throughout the community, all throughout the county. She's a one-year appointment Vista person, but they hope to have someone next year as well, so we even hope that there was some continuity there. And I know that the regional commission is very anxious to be supportive of local energy committees.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the regional commission and the planning commission and a number of, a number of private groups that have been working on energy have all recommended that we do this, have requested that we do this. I think, I think it's, I think it's worth considering, I think especially on a trial basis, but would anybody like to hazard a motion on this? Do we feel that we can, that we could have something on the floor to talk about?
You sent a few different plans, the possible functions, one, two, and three. Are you looking to talk about those specifically now or no?
Well, to me, you know, process, scope, reporting, and timeline. On process, I'm thinking that, I've sort of hinted at this, but I'm thinking that we set it up for a year to design what they're going to do. So we give them, we set up the committee, we give them a charge, we give them this charge, the first item in our town plan, and we ask them to set it up and come back in a year and then maybe at that point, we're looking at a three-year plan or a five-year plan or a 10-year plan. You know, we might be looking at a longer plan, but right now, it feels like too open-ended to commit to a never-ending committee, I guess. On scope, it feels to me like although there was a good proposal offered, you know, there are a number of things in this proposal that might be beyond what the select board would feel comfortable with. Some of these were a little bit political, some of these had to do with money, some of these were, for example, developing referendums items for the town plan or something like that. Those might not be what the planning, what the select board really wants a committee to do.
And remind us when the second document came in.
This came in on February 25th.
That's a good...
Yeah, which, and it gave us a lot of food for thought, but some of these things might, so for example, instead of adopting green building requirements, it might be considering feasibility of adopting green building requirements or instead of setting up a revolving loan fund, it might be looking for funding or opportunities to set up a revolving loan fund. You know, those are the kind of things that might come down the pike. But it feels to me like the scope should really be, we already have a, we already have essentially an energy plan, we just need to prioritize it. So that feels to me like the scope. The reporting to the select board, I was thinking maybe quarterly, maybe we ask this group to come to us quarterly and give an update on what they're thinking. And as I say, on timeline, it feels to me like if we were looking at a one-year commitment and possibly developing a longer commitment about this time next year, that that would make sense to me. So I would be supportive of instituting an energy committee, but I'm not going to do it alone, obviously, it's whatever this board wants to do.
Can I, can I ask, I mean, this, so I think what we're talking about is something that's different than the proposal, maybe not radically, but it is a, it is a different take on this and I am a little concerned about creating an energy committee that the people that were advocating for an energy committee are not comfortable with and that, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that would necessarily change what we do in terms of putting it together, but I would sort of hate to create an energy committee that then there are not individuals who are interested in participating.
What if we try to do something simple, like make a motion for the select board to establish an energy committee simply to try to come up with a game plan, for lack of a better word, for the town's plan on energy?
Well, I think I would hate to spend a year, I think that's a good start, but I would hate that to be the only thing that happens during that full year, but maybe in the first three months to develop a strategy that is agreeable to the select board and then move forward on that.
Well, yeah, and essentially, a committee of the select board would have to be doing the select board, answering the select board's questions. So that feels to me like we don't, this isn't a carte blanche to do anything you want. This is what, and this was confusing, by the way. For those of you that got this by email, this has three versions, skip right to the third version.
Well, there's three versions. I mean, my memory was that there was version one, version two, version three, and that they were of increasing scope or depth, but that one could choose one, two, or three.
Your author's coming to the microphone.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to pull in some of the people that visited with us on September, on February 25th. I see Dick waiting in the wings and if either one of you would like to come up to the microphone here, please do and tell us where you think we are.
Well, just a few comments on that because I was the primary writer of this and I was the one that decided that because people are upset by things that just are too wordy. So if you'd like to just look at page one, then look at page one, it's not wordy at all. Others want all the detail, troubles in the detail, so that's the third version and a compromise is the second. It's all the same plan, depends on how much of recommendations, suggestions you want to accept or the committee wants to accept. This is not something that is set in stone, this is not absolute truth passed down from on high. A lot of it came from up here and that is a faulty instrument, I recognize. I guess one other basic thing about it, because it's a basic thing about the town plan, most of the energies committees I'm familiar with focus almost entirely on how do we save money for the town government? And that's not what the energy plan is about. It is how does this whole community become more efficient in its use of energy, both for reasons of, yes, saving money, but also for reasons of meeting the state's requirement... for reasons of meeting the state's requirement of 90% by 2050. Then I would add a personal comment. I think I told the committee on February 25th that at 90 years old, don't count on me for too long being involved in making suggestions. Twenty-three days later, my wife had a stroke. And so my responsibilities have become much more limited already.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you very much for the energy you've put into this already. I really appreciate that, and I'm sure all of our members feel the same way. Dick, before you start, I would love to just have you reflect on, again, you know, do you think this energy committee could live with the idea of pursuing implementation of this plan, advocating for energy conservation and renewable energy products, and reporting regularly to the select board?
Yes, I think that would be the way to go. We would, we, the climate advocates group, would have always felt from the very beginning that we should have this be an official arm of the town government. And I don't see an informal committee being able to accomplish what a formal committee could accomplish with the board's oversight.
Well, I'm not sure where you all are, but again, I would be interested if people did want to move forward with this in some sort of a motion to create a committee that would pursue implementation of the town plan energy section, advocate for energy conservation and renewable energy projects, and report on a regular basis to the select board.
I'd just like to address Jeanie's concern that, you know, this was a little bit different. I would think that if a formal committee is established and it's a little bit more constrained in what it can do, that doesn't mean that you're going to continue doing other things to promote a healthier environment. Regardless of what the committee is charged to do, they're going to continue on their own in other capacities to work on this. So I'm not concerned, I guess. These are people with passion.
We gave the board two documents. One was a list of 10 people in the community who have expertise, certain amounts of expertise in energy conservation and renewable energy. And the second document was the one that David created. And that, you know, we did that to try to give the board a little head start and a little nudge, because we thought the town energy committee was very important to establish. But we don't, we never did want that to be the document that you had to abide by.
Okay.
Good. That's good to know.
Thank you for that. Now, Madison's been very helpful. She and I have had a number of communications from the B C R C on this. I know that the Maricor Vista people do change regularly, but is it your opinion that if we did create this committee, that they could be a relatively independent committee that could be counted on to do meeting notice and take minutes and get everything to Stuart so that it was not a burden on the town staff?
Yes, I don't see that this would be a burden on the town staff. I think that the committee should do its own administrative work.
And furthermore, would you mind, or would you feel okay about setting it up for a year and kind of doing a plan-to-plan approach so that the committee gets together for a year on one-year appointments and then kind of comes up with a plan of how they might actually move forward with implementing, being part of implementing some of these things?
I myself think it should go beyond just the organizational aspects of, and what to recommend for the town. I think I would expect the committee to take some action over the next year as well as organize themselves. Action...
Yeah, so action, but this committee would be representing, would be working, you know, under the select board, representing the select board. So I think we would have to be, of course, careful not to have a rogue committee on our hands that was...
Sure.
Doing things under the auspices of the select board without us knowing what they were.
The reporting system would hopefully guarantee that they're not rogues.
Right, that we were approving of them first, right, yeah.
Can a sitting select board member be on the committee? Let's see, why not?
Uh, I don't know.
His name's on the list, he's sitting right there, so...
Yeah. I think so, right? Oh, yes, yeah.
So you read something a minute ago. Can we, can I make a motion just to, for...
You know, again, I'm reading right out of the town plan.
Verbatim.
Verbatim. If you were to make a motion, I would say that we set up a committee to pursue implementation of this town plan, advocate for energy conservation and renewable energy projects, and report on a regular basis to the select board.
So moved.
What about the timeframe?
How do you feel about the one-year timeframe?
Why don't we set it up for a year and plan to have a mission objective or a plan within the first quarter?
Yes.
Okay. Now, five members, seven members?
Seven.
Yeah, I think bigger might be a little bit better here.
Seven members feel right?
No, Doc, what do you think?
What do you think about five members, seven members? I would say no more than seven.
It might be better, because when we set up the North Shaft one, we talked about all the different things, whether you're talking about electric, whether you're talking about transportation, or renewable energy, or weatherization, you end up needing, it's better to have groups of two, and you're going to need at least three groups of two.
But the other piece of that is that who, you can always pull in people as you determine what, you know, what you're actually going to focus on. And I would argue that Bill should not be one of those seven, whatever that number is, that you not be one of those seven people.
Speak now.
Because, because then I think, because then I think we reduce the, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, that you shouldn't go. I just think that it reduces the opportunity to have a broader base by one person.
Okay, so seven-member committee, setting it up for one year to follow a recommendation one of the town energy plan? How's that sound for a motion?
That's good.
Are we not putting teeth on this, the idea of Bill being on or not on that? That's your, you're saying that you would, or, I'm not opposed to it. I would say not more than 10 on the committee, but in case you have eight people who are feverishly interested in it, give them a chance. But I'm not opposed to Bill being on that committee.
I'm indifferent, I just think you need people to know what they're talking about.
That's what I mean. I guess what are we putting teeth to here? Does it matter right now in the motion, or are we going to get that detailed?
Well, are we gonna, are we gonna put a number on this? If we're not putting a number on it, then I, then I have no objection. My concern...
Oh, it's about just filling a spot, it's not necessarily, oh, okay. Say no more than 10. What's the difference? We're just picking a number out of thin air anyway.
Well, we will be creating this committee. We will be asking for people to...
Sure. You say no more than 10, then you can have seven, or you can have eight, you can have nine. If you don't have enough people, you could only have five. What's the difference?
Anybody have any opinions on that?
That works, so.
Okay, 10 seems like a big number to me, but we, but I do like the idea of Bill being able to vote on a committee like that if you'd like to. So why don't we, why don't we set up something between seven and 10 members?
I said no more than 10, so that could be...
No more than 10. Okay, no more than 10, and we will make this a public process, and then we will interview candidates for it.
Do we want to put a timeline on the interviews?
Let's, I wonder if we should vote on this first and just decide if you want to do it, and then work out the logistics.
Okay, and we don't need to work out the logistics here, probably.
So there's a motion on the floor.
Devils in the details.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion about the motion on the floor? No. Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are creating an energy committee. Thank you very much. And now, just very briefly, Stuart, details on this. What do we have to do to allow people to show their interest and be interviewed for this committee?
What I would propose that we do, I hand it out to you all, press release that is prepared, attached to Bill, which is on your table, finally, when you arrive. It's not probably a very interesting view.
Yeah, got it.
We will add the energy committee with a mission to this, indicate that there are no more than 10 positions to be filled, and applications would be filed just as they will be for these. And then once we, once we get all of those applications in, because this is a new board or committee, I think we'll have to establish a time to do interviews that would probably not try to squeeze in before a board meeting.
No.
Might want to do a special...
Hey, Stuart, I think your microphone is turned off.
Pardon me?
I think your microphone is turned off.
I turned it off when I got up to leave the table and never thought to turn it back on. I'll get my meeting voice back on. But I was going to ask the board during, during the manager's report, if you don't need to conduct interviews for the people who are coming back.
Right.
Then that'll shorten the process, but we certainly aren't going to have to interview the people who are coming onto the energy committee because it's a first-time creation. That's my assumption. But it'll be a part of this press release that goes out.
Okay.
And this is going out, like, this week? Is that, I see it's today's date?
By the end of the week, yes.
So for those of you in the audience that haven't seen this, this is a press release talking about boards and commissions, the development review board, the housing authority board, the board of listers, the planning commission, and the town service officer. And those are, added to that will be the newly-formed town energy committee. So I appreciate everybody waiting through this. I really think it's going to be good, Dick. And David, I thank you very much for taking this on. It's probably one of the most important issues of the day, and it's great to have some energy to work on it. So thank you very much for that. So...
Thank you.
Let's see. So all in favor, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of moving forward with this committee?
Already voted.
We did? Okay, we're already voted, okay, good. So we're done, all right.
Let's do it again.
Let's do it again.
So much fun.
Okay. So we've done that, we've got the, we've got the process, that's going out in the press release. Good. So, next item on the agenda, thank you very much. I wondered where that went. We have a, this will be very quick. We have been working on reviewing the purchasing policy. Melissa from the town office has been very helpful. Carson and I and Jim were part of that group. Jim didn't make the early meetings, but he has, I've communicated with him, he's very kindly offered to relinquish his seat because Bill Scully's expressed a strong interest in being part of that. I guess I'm just asking this board if they would be okay of a work committee of Donald and Bill and Carson went ahead and continued to work with the town to come up with a revised purchasing policy.
Yep.
Which would then come here for a vote. Okay.
Yep.
Liquor licenses. Stuart, what have you got for us?
I have a revised form from the one that was in your packet. Obviously, these come to us from the town clerk's office. We have five class-one renewals and one second-class renewal. And because they're all renewals, we'll just circulate for your signatures.
Okay, thank you. And a manager's report, have you got?
Yes. One action item, and this is the request that was made last, at the last meeting, for a letter of support for S-113. I drafted the original, sent it around to you all, did get some comments, I think from three or four of you. This attempts to incorporate your comments, not all of the comments, and it is here for your signature should you decide to accept this draft.
Maybe we should read it.
So...
If you'd like, I could read it.
Why don't you read it aloud, Stuart?
Sure.
I think it's been circulated, but I also feel if we don't sign it tonight, it may be too late to really be worth much, so...
That may be true. This is the letter addressed to the Bennington Legislative Delegation. Ladies and gentlemen, we ask you to support S-113 and ensure that it passes into law. As you well know, this proposal seeks to reduce the negative environmental impacts of single-use plastic bags. We believe this legislation will be much more effective than a haphazard town-by-town approach to this ban. If the legislature fails to enact meaningful legislation to address this problem in this session, our select board will immediately take steps to enact a ban similar to S-113. Vermont prides itself on its environmental lifestyle, supporting conservation, preservation, and equality of life second to none. This legislation takes another positive step in improving our state and our planet. There is so much more that can be done, but small steps count. In these troubling times where climate change is wreaking havoc on our weather systems and where dire predictions about the health of our planet are now the norm, we must take these small steps. We believe you will agree that this measure is only a beginning. We trust you will support it. Thank you in advance, sincerely, the Bennington Select.
Okay. Is there anybody who does not want to sign that letter? I think we're, I think you've done a good job with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a good letter.
Couple of comments. At the request of staff, I remind everyone in the community that hydrant flushing began today. It runs from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for this week and the week following. If your water is discolored after the hydrants have been flushed, please run your cold water until it clears. Not your hot water, your cold water. And that will remove the silt from the lines. We've already talked about the boards and commissions notice. That was not part of the manager's report. And if I may, just one or two comments about the Dewey Street ravine clearing. We did receive a couple of complaints about dead and dying trees. The staff moved in to clear those and ultimately made a decision on site that there was enough material in there that was essentially junk trees, junk shrubbery, that they took it upon themselves to clear the entire ravine. One, it improves the drainage way, which is what it's become. It's no longer a railroad railway way, but it's a drainage way. But I tend to agree with the folks. It was rather drastic when you see it from your back porch, or from Dewey Street when you look up the ravine now. So I'll take seriously the petition we received tonight. We'll talk with some arborists, try to put together a plan that we can run through these folks to perhaps replant or revegetate that area so that we recreate some of the screening that was there that gave them privacy in their backyards.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then, informationally, you've asked that I detail more of this information that I provide to the manager's report, because it's not often that it's carried by the news media. The Department of Health was in town for an open house. I don't know how many of you managed to go over to the Department of Health. And they were talking about the new PFOA settlement that is in place. I think there is still a 30-day appeal period once it is filed with the court. But that looks like it's going forward, and that's really good news for the folks in the northeastern quadrant of this community, because they will have good drinking water, whether it's municipal water, a new well, or a Poet's System that has been modified to fit their needs. That all depends on the engineering aspects of extending municipal water. The marketing RFP is out. Those are due May 3rd, by the end of the business day. I did attach a revised copy of the complete RFP. The notice was somewhat smaller in the banner, but it did run on April 16th. We have received from the folks who are pursuing the Star Street Playground, their 10, top 10 wish list of the natural playground materials. They have actually been run through our insurer, and we have received comments on many of them. Many of them look like they are possibilities. So now we are awaiting the design from the individual, the company they selected for this process, and we'll see how many of those can actually be constructed. And just in case Shannon decides to leave us, she's now become a playground designer, much to her dismay, perhaps. The Park at 336, Park and Merchant's Park are both moving forward again. You've probably seen some work at 336, having to relocate some of the underground materials in the original design. And I understand, Dan, that the contractors are coming back into town for the splash pad finish-up.
We think probably may have finished up the work on the splash pad itself.
Okay.
CDC will be starting the stage, they say, and hoping that they're on target.
Okay, that's great. Okay, that's great. And that is, that's an interesting point, that the CDC students will be working to build and construct the stage, which is a great opportunity. The police department audit, I may have indicated in the past that following the news that we were going to do an audit, I did receive three proposals, unsolicited, except for one, which had been recommended to me. But because we've received so many, we took a step back, and working with Donald, we sought the help of the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity, which is a Brattleboro organization. And we're going to craft an RFP that will go out to the three vendors that have already submitted, plus it'll go to more, more companies that may wish to provide a cost estimate for doing that particular audit. So the audit will go forward, we continue to be online to do that, and that's all I have. I did answer the various warrant questions that were raised last week, but I don't think I need to review those.
That's great. Stuart, thank you very much for doing that. For those of you who are not used to having Stuart go through his informational section, Jeanie and I had talked about this with him at one point, and felt that it was worth him doing it because a lot of really important stuff happens here, the town's doing a tremendous amount of good work, and it doesn't always get out into the news, so thank you very much for taking it there, Kathy V. So, in terms of, we've added upcoming agenda, this will be very brief. What we have on tap right now is that on the 13th, we would be looking at the DID, reviewing the plan and setting the budget for that, and we also will be visiting with the Planning Commission. They're still planning to come, so we're looking forward to that, to hear about what the Planning Commission's got coming. The meeting on May 28th would be a holiday, and so, 27th, I'm sorry, would be a holiday, so we're proposing a very short meeting just to sign warrants and do other business on the 28th. So that's a Tuesday. I would like to know if people have their calendars, if we can get a forum together for that meeting. That's the Tuesday, May 28th. Then, at the June 10th meeting, right now, we're looking at the UCS plan, we've got that coming down the pike, so what they're thinking of with the rec center and what's going on with that. And so far, on June 24th, we're looking forward to hearing from the Building Right Futures Group. And Stuart, do you have other things that you'd like us to be?
Most likely on the night that you review the UCS plans, we'll also have a presentation from Goldstone Architects about the Phase 2, which is the gymnasium, the natorium, on those additional projects that would be town-funded and perhaps with assistance from Y at some point in the future.
Great. And there'll be more, but that's what we're looking at right now for your future meeting attending pleasure. Other business, I'm going to start out by just saying, I don't know, I hope everybody's heard about this, but it's been an incredible pleasure for this board and this town to work with Mariko Silver, the now outgoing president of Bennington College, who has, who has taken a great job with the Henry Luce Foundation, and she has really, since 2013, when she came to Bennington, she has really shaken things up, and she has brought a tremendous amount of energy to this community. So I would like to say, on behalf of myself, and I think probably that my members would join me, thank you, Mariko, for all you've done for our community and for all that you've brought to us. On, second thing, on May 23rd, there's the Southern Vermont Economic Summit happening in Dover. Is anybody on this board going to that?
Yes.
Jeanie, you going to that? Stuart, is anyone from the town staff going?
Shannon's raised her hand, so.
Shannon's going, okay. So Bennington will be represented there.
Economic Development Summit and Playground Design.
Good job, Shannon. And just the other thing to note is that work on the pump track at the Stark Street Playground is starting this week. So the BATS group, Bennington Area Trail Systems, is very excited to get that underway, no cost to the town, but we're really looking forward to adding some recreational things to do at that end. So, Jean, what have you got for us?
Lots of little things. First of all, vote tomorrow, we're voting for school board members, or the, I can't remember the name of it, but vote tomorrow. The opioid presentation, I went to Phase 2, which was the presentation, I think Donald you went to the forum, anyway, it was amazing.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, it was really great. Green Up Day is May 4th, and I will be participating, I've been, people have told me I should share this, and I haven't until now, but I'm turning 60 this year, and I'm doing 60 hours of community service. So I'm picking and choosing organizations that I want to support, so I will be out there on Green Up Day. And there's a really sweet little poster, which I can't find, oh, here it is. It's on the website, and you can call the town office and figure out where to pick up your bags and where to dispose of them. So anyway, May 4th, Saturday, is Green Up Day.
Turn it towards the camera, he can zoom in. Hold it steady.
A surgeon I am not. That's it.
Carson?
Last Friday, I had the good fortune of not having to work that day, and I went up to Willow Park, the playground, and there were no less than 50 kids on that playground. I just, as I sometimes hear, that playground might be aging out, it's just important to keep that one on our radar. It's a great community resource, that park is fantastic, it's been a huge asset for a lot of different people and sports, and it's just wonderful, so. Just remind it up there how many people utilize it.
Yep, and we can't wait until that gets beyond.
And it's great, I mean, it's, I'm not complaining about the condition of it, I'm just saying it's actively used, so I don't know when that has to phase out. I have a pretty good idea when it's going to phase out, but it wasn't entirely truthful. But it's, it's a great place, we just need to keep that in mind, so.
Yeah, town staff, keep us posted. Jeanie?
Just Startup 802 Showcase is this Wednesday at 6:00 at the Community Room at the Community College of Vermont, and that's an opportunity to hear the latest batch of entrepreneurs and people thinking about maybe starting a small business pitch their ideas. So it's free, and come out and listen.
Paulson?
Thank you, Chad. Phil, anything for you tonight?
I'm still getting up to speed on everything. Thanks to Stu and the staff for taking time to meet with me and answering all my questions, and that'll go on for a little while longer, I think, but thank you.
We're ready.
All right, well, we have a need to go into executive session for contracts, may I please have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will be going into executive session. Thank you for coming.